May the 10th, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight our invocation and pledge allegiance will be given by Ben Andrus, Longview Police Department Chaplain. Please stand.
Shall we pray together? Father, I thank you that we can come to you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. I thank you that we can come to you with hearts that are full of praise for all of the ways in which you have provided for us as a people, as a community. I especially tonight, Father, want to give you thanks for those whom you've given as a gift to our community who serve us and protect us. I thank you for those men and women of law enforcement that even tonight, even at this moment, are on the streets serving and protecting us. They are your gift and we give you thanks for them. I thank you, Father, for those police officers over the time and over even in recent days who have given their lives to serve the community in which they serve and to serve us as well. We ask for your continued comfort and encouragement for their families and for those who are were serving alongside of them, that they too would be encouraged and strengthened. We pray, Father, that you would guide this group tonight. We thank you for each one that has been elected to serve. We pray that you would give them individual and collective wisdom as they direct the affairs of the city that we have, that is also a gift from you. Thank you again, Father, for all of your precious gifts, for your life, for the life that you give us, and we pray it in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Will you join me, please, in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrus. We now have some election items to take care of. Ms. Shepherd?
Do you have any family you want to be up here with you?
Sure.
Okay.
Kelly?
It's a family affair.
Kelly can stand on the left side of you so the second kid... If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Andy Mack.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the mayor.
Duties of the mayor.
Of the city of Longview.
City of Longview.
And the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ed Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council.
Of city council.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mom? Very good. Mommy? Haven't seen a ninety-year-old move like this one before. My young ninety-year-old mom, so... All right. I state your name.
I, Nona Snotty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council.
Of city council.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Because I'm a traditionalist, council, would you all please make your point? Please stand in that order. Thank you all very much for the indulgence. Tonight in employee recognition, we're going to recognize partners in prevention. On Tuesday, May the first, our Partners in Prevention team was presented with the Crystal Pineapple Award from the Junior League of Longview to recognize their dedication to the Longview community and support of the Junior League. Partners in Prevention has partnered with the Junior League through a variety of programs. For three years, the Junior League Skills, Prison Sex Program matched their volunteers for the Forever Friends Program through multiple activities and opportunities such as sponsoring Forever Friends, mentees at Stars Over Longview, the Youth Empowerment Seminar, and events at the League Center. Expanding opportunities provide discussion on healthy relationships, career options, plans after high school, and interviewing communication etiquette. Additionally, Partners in Prevention worked for the Junior League to facilitate the annual Poverty Conference which reaches thousands of local educators, service providers, and many League members have participated in poverty situations and simulation trainings provided by the Partners in Prevention. Also, Partners in Prevention staff served on the League's Community Advisory Board for four years. This community collaboration between two strong, dedicated, and passionate organizations, both focused on making Longview a better place to live, is a shining example of what partners can achieve. The representative for Partners in Prevention, please come forward. Holly Fuller, Patty Easton, Erica Castelou, Garland Hillhouse, Jasmine Stoker, and Whitney Pierce. The Crystal Pineapple. Isn't that wonderful? What a great group this is, what a wonderful department you all are, that provides so much for so many people in so many forms that most of us don't even recognize what you all do until it's done. And we say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. Y'all are present in everything that we do and we thank you for the service you provide to people that really need the service that only you can provide for us through our city." And it's what a department, what a great group that we have, and it's just so wonderful to see you all up here in the things that you do. And I thank you, from the city's standpoint, from the citizen's standpoint, those that you make a difference, you make a real difference. We appreciate you very much. Thank you. Gentlemen, Partners in Prevention, this is probably the most proactive departments we have in our community and in our city. We thank you all for your proactivity. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the rodeo. Would Julio, Areola, come up, please? Come on up, Julio. How you doing, buddy?
Good, very good.
I got Julio up here. We're gonna talk about the rodeo that we just had at the PRCA, the Grecton Rotary Club. Julio, how many people do we have come to the rodeo this year?
An average of about thirty-five hundred. We were rained out on Saturday night.
It's a great, okay, we're not here to talk about the rodeo. No, we're not. We're here for community recognition. Tonight I'm recognizing Julio as our community representative from the community that does so much for our, he thought he was coming for the rodeo, told him about getting here. Because he wouldn't come here if I told him what I was doing this for. Because guys like Julio do it because they don't need recognition, they do it because it's in his heart right here, and he does so many things that you all will never know. But he's so involved in the rodeo, the Grecton Rotary Club, you know, he mows George Ritchie on his own time, he does things like that. Every nonprofit that needs something, Julio is there with Cavenders to pitch in. He's a guy that you can call on and he's gonna get an answer every time. And Julio, that's the kind of guy we like as our community recognition because you are the man that just steps up and does what we need to do, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, my friend. I appreciate you. Hold on. I promise you, he would have never come if he knew this was what it was for. That's why I like this guy so much. Thank you, Julio. We have a couple of presentation items now. We have a proclamation commemorating National Police Memorial Day. Sergeant Shane McCarter and Officer Jason Kelly. Please come forward.
This is a proclamation commemorating National Police Week, May fourteenth to the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas the Longview Police Department has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize May fourteenth to the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as National Police Week in the city of Longview. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated the week in which May the fifteenth falls as National Police Week, and I further call upon all citizens of Longview to observe Tuesday, May the fifteenth, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of these Longview Police Department officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Longview Officers George Tabler, September eighteen eighty-six, Boyd Gaunt and B.C. Roberts, May nineteen forty-eight, Walter A. Connell, May nineteen seventy-one, Harvey L. Stevens, January nineteen seventy-two, Marshall Souders, Jr., November nineteen seventy-seven, Sergeant Randy L. Davis, January nineteen eighty-four. Now therefore, Andy Mack, by authority vested in me as mayor, city of Longview, proclaim May the fourteenth to the eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as National Police Week in Longview, Texas.
Gentlemen, you all represent these heroes that have served our community and our country in the ultimate sacrifice and have given their lives, and you would do it gladly every day because that's why you wear this uniform. That's what makes our police department so special. We have as good a public safety department anywhere in the state of Texas, and I'll say that to anybody, anywhere, because we do. They stick their necks out there every day for you and I so we don't have to. So I appreciate you and I applaud you, and our city thanks you. Honored to stand here with you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stay up here. Just walking around. Now our proclamation for Serenity Pride, the Longview Museum of Fine Arts winner. Who's here with Serenity Pride? Come here, Serenity. Anybody with you? Parents? Come on up. This is a family affair. It's a group thing. Those of y'all that don't know what we're doing, this, these are fun things. What we do, a lot of times the organizations in town need fundraisers and they need ways to raise money, and so I am always happy to be able to do a proclamation for someone for a day in the honor of someone who wants to donate something to a nonprofit organization. So that's what we do, and I think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm glad that you all will do it, and I appreciate you all, because this is not free. Trust me, this, this is not free. So we appreciate you supporting the people that need help in our community, and by doing this, it's Serenity Pride Day, May the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. So whereas children of our most precious treasure that bring joy to our lives in immeasurable ways, and the Longview Museum of Fine Arts provide an opportunity to recognize individuals by proclamation of the city, today we celebrate Serenity Pride's birthday, her amazing kindness and her resilience in overcoming severe dyslexia in pursuit of her dream of becoming a zoologist. So now therefore, Andy Mack, by authority vested in me as mayor, city of Longview, proclaim May the tenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Serenity Pride Day in the city of Longview. Thank you all. Oh, my gosh. Thank you all. Thank you. Yeah, let's get a picture. Hold on. Hold on, hold on.
All right, Andy, you wanna come up here?
Yes, come on up, Andy. Come on. It's okay. Hey, come on. Hurry on. Come on. This is what it's all about. Come on. What a special day. Thank you all so much. Thank you for your support of the community. Thank you all. Thank you, sweetheart. Awesome. We are now to citizen comment. I had no speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak and fill out a card after the meeting? Very well. We are now to one of my favorite things that we do all year long. Mayor Mack's scholarship recipients. Tonight we have all four of our recipients here to read their essays and receive their awards, and I am so incredibly honored to have been able to be a part of this again this year. Reading these essays is such a joy because I see, I get to see the hearts of seniors in high school, and it's so wonderful to see where those hearts are. And the most difficult thing I do all year long is decide which four people sit right there, because so many of these essays are just, they're just amazing. And it, it's hard to do, but these are our clear winners this year. You all were wonderful in your essays, and I appreciate you being here. And so now we would like for you to come forward, one at a time, and read your essays for us. First off, from Halswell SD, Brett Parks.
Hello. Thank you all for your time. So I'm gonna be reading my essay that I submitted. All the time, I like to help out in the community. During football season in the fall of two thousand and seventeen, along with fellow teammates, I helped out an animal shelter moving dog and cat food to the shelter from Sam's Club. That really felt relieving, being able to volunteer and work for that shelter. I also am in the National Honor Society where I had the opportunity to take children from North and East Elementary in Halswell to Longview's very own mall. There, Halswell NHS students, including me, bought the elementary students' shoes and got a picture with Santa. I've been doing that for three years now, and it is a great experience for both the children and the NHS students, and I've also spent many hours picking up trash. That might be downtown, near the golf course on Alpine, and near Target. And I believe that our town should be clean, and I'm very thankful that it is clean, that is as it is now. I have over seventy-nine hours of community service, and I'm proud to say that that number is still continuing to rise, and I thank you all for your consideration.
He ain't standing above me. No, thank you. Okay. This is for Brett. I appreciate your essay, Brett. Thanks for getting there, reading that thing. It's been a pleasure knowing what you have in your heart, and I thank you for your service. Let's have a picture right here. Next, we have from Longview High School, Hannah Miller.
Okay, hi. It's nice to be here. So I anticipate contributing to the community by becoming a registered nurse and serving in the pediatric wing. I will be attending UT Tyler to pursue this degree, and I'll be going into the pre-nursing program as a freshman. I plan on applying to the School of Nursing and Health Sciences to achieve a bachelor degree of science. After graduating this program, I'll be eligible to take the license examination to become a nurse. I first grew up at First Christian Church in Longview, and I met many families there. There was a lady named Whitney, and we were thrilled that she had told us that she was having a little girl. What she didn't know was that it was going to impact her for the rest of her life. The doctors told her that her daughter named Arilyn Faith had fluid in her brain. Soon after, she was diagnosed with a rare chromosome disease called trisomy eight and agencies of the corpus callosum. The doctors told her that her daughter would not live, and she would have to prepare herself. And two and a half years later, Arilyn, who is called Bunny, is still living and fighting to stay. Today, she is seven years old and is overcoming an obstacle, every obstacle thrown her way. Watching such a beautiful young lady and her, support her baby is truly inspiring. Bunny's nurses would comfort Whitney and would tell her to stay strong and never give up on her beautiful baby girl. This experience has led me to want to become a pediatric nurse and to help kids like Arilyn Faith give their parents the same support and hope. Pediatric nurses provide health and medical care for children from birth through their late teens. Growing up in a household with a single parent has taught me how to become independent and work hard to achieve greatness. My father hasn't always been a part of my life, therefore my mom has supported three kids on a single income for almost ten years. He has been unable to keep a steady job, therefore I had to get a job the summer before my junior year to help pay for my college classes. I work almost twenty-five hours a week while cheering, studying for several dual-credit classes, and obtaining a three-point-four-seven GPA. Volunteering allows you to get out and be active in the world, whether it's going out to the apartments and teaching kids Bible stories to passing out food and blankets to the homeless people downtown. Any activity will make a huge impact in the community and the lives around you. Getting involved will make you feel better about yourself and help you grow as a person throughout the community. Seeing those that are less fortunate and that do not have the same luxuries as you makes you grateful. I have done several community service activities throughout Longview such as Butner's Valentine's Party, Highway Eighty Can Drive and Coast for Kids. But the one I've enjoyed the most is the Buddy Walk for Down Syndrome. I have known Alex Mack since we were babies. We did gymnastics together at a young age. She has become a sister to me. We currently both cheer at Longview High School, and there never seems to be a dull moment when she's around. She manages to make me laugh, and her bubbly personality always lights up the room in an instant. Every year, she asks me if I'm going to be on her team for the Buddy Walk, and I can't imagine saying no. This has been a great opportunity to get involved in the community and celebrate joyful lives of those who have Down Syndrome. I plan on coming home every year to walk with Alex as her buddy and show her love and support. Another community service activity I enjoy doing was painting fire hydrants with the National Honor Society. We went through Longview and cleaned up and painted the old fire hydrants bright yellow to help the firefighters see them better at night. It's crazy how something so huge, or small, can make a huge impact in the community. I enjoy getting involved, and I plan on volunteering as much as possible even when I move off to college. Thank you.
What a great essay. Hannah, thank you so much for participating, and this is one smart girl. I should've just mentioned my niece, Alex Mack, and she's in. It was awesome. Thank you so much. You'll make a great pediatric nurse. Next, from Pine Tree High School, Caroline Kerfman.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. It's an honor. At the age of nine, my family began taking in children through the foster care system. It was a huge life change, but at only nine years old, my brain couldn't comprehend exactly how huge of a change it would be. Growing up between two boys, I couldn't wait for the day I would get a sister. Nine years, twelve foster children, and three adoptions later, I'm blessed to be the older sister of three precious little girls. Looking back on those nine years, my life has never been the same, and I'm so thankful for that. The children that came through our home have absolutely changed my life for the better. And yes, as I'm sure you're wondering, having to give them back is extremely difficult. With each child that came and went, my heart broke a little more. However, as long as the child is safe and happy, that's all that matters. What most people don't know is that these children come from within our own neighborhoods and communities. One of our foster children even came to us from right down the street of my best friend. These children are often neglected, abused, starved, and even sold for drugs. Due to those terrible situations, most children will arrive at a foster home with a diaper and a shirt if they're lucky. These children rarely have anything to call their own. After a year or two of fostering and seeing kids come to my family with nothing, we started a nonprofit organization called Legacy Closet of Longview. Our purpose is to help foster families in surrounding areas by relieving them of any costs and providing them with things such as clothes, shoes, diapers, formula, car seats, toys, and so much more. I personally help organize and pack these bags on a regular basis as well as making deliveries to foster families when necessary. We're able to provide for these families thanks to the donations and volunteer work of so many people in Longview and surrounding areas. Our church, Fellowship Bible Church of Longview, has helped by providing a large space for us to store our continually growing ministry. Legacy Closet has also branched out and started another organization called Christmas for the least of these, which is similar to Legacy Closet, but only happens around Christmas. And we provide foster families with Christmas gifts for their foster kids and other children that they might not have been able to afford. Although I'm leaving for college soon and heading out of Longview, I love Longview so much, and I love being able to serve my community. As I said before, foster care has changed my life immensely. I could not be more grateful for every opportunity it's given me to love these children and serve my community in a way that I couldn't have before.
Thank you, Caroline. What a wonderful testament to what we all should be doing, isn't it? We just thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
And now we have from Spring Hill High School, Mr. Jacob Hill.
I have lived in Longview my entire life. I have attended Spring Hill High School since kindergarten and will graduate this spring. I'm a member of Boy Scout Troop Six Thirteen, which is sponsored by the First Lutheran Church in Spring Hill. As a member of Scouts, I have participated in many service projects around the city. I have helped with wheelchair ramps at Lear Park, renovated the Gazepa at Magrill Plaza, installing a picnic pavilion for Highway Eighty Rescue Mission, built picnic tables for several churches around town, and participating in roadside cleanups. I personally led my Eagle Scout project to combat pollution in the city by placing markers onto the storm drains, asking people to refrain from dumping garbage and yard waste into our waterways. As a member of Spring Hill High School Leaders Corps, we've sold flowers to help beautify our city as well as distributing backpack lunches for the primary and intermediate campuses along with collecting cokes for kids. Also, as a member of- Also, as a member of National Honor Society, we assisted the Asbury House with the Halloween Carnival and we collected blankets and care packages for Highway eighty rescue mission. I will soon be an adult leader with Scout Troop 613 while I will help new scouts learn to become leaders in our community.
What a great testament Jacob. Thank you for serving our community the way that you do. Keep up the good work buddy. A lot more ahead of you, I'm sure. Thank you so much. You can stand up here with me.
Okay, now I'll for you up back, please. Okay, now if you need the families, you want to come up with that picture, you're welcome to. No, see I want to come up and get in the picture. If you want to take it because that's fine. Love for you to get in the picture though. Come on. Y'all come up, stand up with your children. Be proud, I'm proud of your children. We have one little surprise. Come up here.
Your microphone is all yours.
Hello everyone, my name is Sharonda Jackson. I am assistant store manager for Walmart at 398, which is your local fourth street. When I heard about the Andy Mack Scholarship last year, I was just eager to see what I can do to help you guys. So my store along with Gilmore Road and Estes Parkway, we all come together to give you guys a gift card, just as a congratulations, you guys keep going. You guys are starting your lives off right, like seriously. I am so proud of you guys, you guys inspire me, believe it or not. I'm actually starting school this fall. So just on behalf of our company, I mean congratulations and keep going.
You get in the middle when you pass them out and get a picture with you in the middle, okay? I want y'all to know, this young lady is probably the most persistent human being I have ever met. Literally, she, okay, let's get a picture. She contacts me on Facebook. I didn't contact her and when I don't respond back, she contacts me again and again and again until she beats it into my head until the last minute when I forget to do it and she still takes care of things. So on behalf of you sweetheart and for Walmart, thank you all so much. And thank you all so much.
What great community partners we have in this community. I'm so proud to be a part of what's going on in Longview. We are now to our public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, thanks for giving me an opportunity to give you a little update since the last time we met. What's some great essays that we just heard. That's very nice. One of the good things that I get to do in my position as chief from time to time is to get to recognize our officers for some great work that they did. Here recently, I just had the opportunity to present Alex Chorba with the Department's Meritorious Conduct Award. And if I could just take a minute and kind of give you a brief synopsis of what Officer Chorba did to receive that award. On November 26th of 2017, our officers, our dispatch center received a call of a robbery that had just occurred at the Easy Mart at 1801 South High Street. The dispatchers immediately dispatched some officers to that call. While the officers were en route, they heard Officer Chorba, who was off duty at the time, get on the radio and put himself out there at the call. Officer Chorba happened to be sitting at the intersection there at the red light, saw the individuals exiting the store, and saw the distress on the clerk's face. Officer Chorba then gave pursuit in his personal vehicle, which then led to a short foot pursuit and he was able to take the two subjects into custody before our officers arrived. It was later found out that one of the individuals was armed with a handgun when they took him into custody. So I want to thank Officer Chorba for a job well done and congratulate him for the nomination from his peers and the recognition through that award with Meritorious Conduct Award. And then another award that I was able to give out was the Department Civic Achievement Award and I was able to present that to Officer Kristy Bryan. Kristy was nominated by her supervisor for the work that Kristy has done over the years with the Women's Safety Course. We have had many, many women here in Longview take this course that's specifically designed for women. Kristy put this course together from the ground up. She started it in 2008 and this has become one of our biggest attending public outreaches that we do. The last class, we had thirty-six members in there. When the class was done, I got thirty-six emails about how great the course was and I wonder how that happened. But I want to thank Kristy and for all the effort that she put into this course to putting information out there to women on how they can better be safe and protect themselves. As you know, the last several months, we've had several retirements, which have created some vacancies and ranked positions within the department. The last two months, we've been going through a pretty rigorous promotional process for the rank of lieutenant and the rank of sergeant. I'm proud to announce that tomorrow at 2:00, Sergeant Shane McCarter will be promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Shane currently serves as our Public Information Officer and we will have a promotional ceremony tomorrow at 2:00 PM in the municipal courtroom. We'll have two candidates that will be promoted to the rank of sergeant tomorrow as well. Officer Drew Allison and I debuted Drew last council meeting in the video that we had prepared. And Drew finished first on the sergeant's process and he'll be promoted to sergeant tomorrow at 2:00 PM as well in the courtroom. And then our second candidate for promotion to sergeant is Officer Jerry Higginbotham. He currently serves as a traffic officer in our traffic division. So he's going to have to come off the motorcycle and back into a car as a first-line supervisor. So I want to congratulate all three of them on a job well done and I look forward to promoting them tomorrow and if you're available, we'd like to have you stop by. Summertime's coming up, children will be out of school shortly. We're getting ready to kick off one of our first summer camps that we have. It's our Police Explorer Camp. Anyone that might be interested in police work or our Police Explorer Program will have a special four-day camp from June 18th through June 21st. That'll be held out at Spring Hill Junior High School. We do charge a $30 charge for this, but lunch will be provided and we'll provide them with a T-shirt at the completion of the camp. But if we have any students out there that are interested in law enforcement, want to see a little bit more about what all is entailed, we'd encourage them to contact the police department and sign up for this course. And then Mayor, thanks for reading that proclamation tonight. As you said, next week is Police Memorial Week and on Tuesday night, the 15th, we'll have the opportunity to recognize the officers, all the officers in Gregg County for the job that they've done for the year, but also pay tribute to those officers in Gregg County too that have given their lives in the line of duty. So we'd love to have you, have anybody that's interested in coming. Can contact Karen Grisham for tickets at 237-1100 and the ticket price is $15. And we still have some available, so I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Chief, thank you. And the Johnson Law Enforcement is a wonderful banquet to attend. If you haven't attended, you should because it's just a tribute to our men and women that put their lives on the line every day for us. I enjoy it every year. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town on Tuesday, so I won't be there, but my thoughts and hearts will be with you guys and thank you for all that you do, Chief. Thank you, sir. You ready to consent agenda? Yes. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Zoning. Public hearing to hear application S-18-01, Ms. Choi.
Thank you Mayor Mack, members of council and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for a drive-through window within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. This property, if you remember, used to be a Cajun steamer. Planning and Zoning Commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any comments on this issue? Public hearing is now closed.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, tell the city to application S-18-02, Ms. Choi.
Thank you Mayor Mack. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a gas station with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. As stated before, a specific use permit is required for a drive-through window in general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. The applicant has indicated that the drive-through window will be for the sale of alcoholic beverages, prepackaged foods, hot foods, and other items. Planning and Zoning Commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any discussion? Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, application H-18-01, Ms. Choi.
Thank you Mayor Mack. The applicant is Alton Plaza LLC. They are requesting a local historic landmark designation for the petroleum building. If this is approved, this will be Longview's sixth local landmark. This building is located at the southeast corner of Fredonia and Whaley Street, addressed as 202 East Whaley. This building would be a positive adaptive reuse of this building. The developers of this property are proposing to convert this building into an apartment complex. The petroleum building is a five-story building originally constructed as a downtown auto park as seen in this picture provided by Mr. Andy Curry. It was a parking garage built in 1953. The structure was sold to Earl Hollensworth and Lee Travis in 1954. Earl Hollensworth and Lee Travis were two influential East Texas businessmen who developed their drilling company, Hollensworth Drilling Company, into one of the largest such companies in the southwest region. In 1956, this building was converted into an office building. At this time, the building housed a coffee shop and jewelry store on the ground level and offices were installed on the upper levels. This building was occupied until around the 1970s. This building is a noted modern movement architectural product of the Texas Architectural Firm of Wilson Morris Crane and Anderson. Notable partner of this firm was local architect B.W. Crane, who built many buildings in Longview, Texas. Due to its historical, economic, architectural, and cultural significance, staff along with the Planning and Zoning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're down to action item. Consider a resolution, appointing the mayor pro tem this year. First, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Noddy for being our mayor pro tem for the last year. You've done a wonderful job, Ms. Nona, in everything that I've asked you to do and you've always been there and I appreciate that, as all of you all have who have served in that capacity. This year, we will ask to appoint Mr. David Wright as our mayor pro tem. So if there's no discussion, is there a motion?
I'm moved to.
Second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for agreeing to be our mayor pro tem. Look forward to working with you again this year. We are now to items of community interest. Mr. Moore.
It's been an honor to serve the residents of District One for the last three years and I thank you for the confidence you've placed in me to serve you for these next three years. Second, a number of us had the opportunity to attend the National Day of Prayer out at the East Texas Christian School and I just wanted to thank Ms. Russell's fifth-grade class for adopting me as their community leader. And I would like to thank Brianna, Devon, Gideon, Hunter, Judah, Landon, and Savannah for praying for me throughout the year. Lord, I needed it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Noddy.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you to, oh, my family's all gone, but, no, I too am honored and want to be grateful for having the opportunity to serve the D2 community another three years for another term, so I'm grateful as well.
Thank you. Mr. Wade.
Yes, just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out to the town meeting on May 3rd. It was a really great turnout. The participation of everyone that came, city staff, employees, everyone, Mr. Bonds, thank you guys for coming out and being supportive that day. Councilman Snoddy, Councilwoman Snoddy as well. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Purtle.
Nothing.
Mr. Bonds.
I love everything.
Okay. Our summer reading club encourages kids to keep reading throughout the summer and it is a way for them to have tons of fun. Come to the library to sign up, register online at longviewtexas.gov slash SRC. Our Longview Fire Department and Partners in Prevention advise students from Longview and surrounding areas to participate in the Heroes of Tomorrow Summer Camp, also called Hot Camp. This one-day camp provides fun, hands-on experience introducing area youth to career opportunities within the Longview Fire Department such as water and high angle rescue, fire hazmat, and emergency medical services. Registration for the Hot Camp is underway at longviewtexas.gov slash Hot Camp or by calling 903-237-1119. Our Longview Parks and Rec is now registering for summer Learn to Swim classes. They offer private, semi-private, and group classes for ages six months to adults. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov slash LTS or call 903-237-1270. We have a number of upcoming events that are happening in our community. Junking in the Pine Spring Sale is May 11th and 12th off of FM 2011 near Gregg County Airport. Make plans to see Longview's, theater Longview's new play, The Foreigner. Performance dates are May 17th through the 20th at Grace Crossing Methodist Church. Come see the Gala of Royal Horses at the Longview Rodeo Arena on Saturday, May 19th or Sunday, May 20th. For more information on any of these events, please check out the calendar, visit longviewtexas.com or city events, visit longviewtexas.gov slash calendar. Okay, survey time. Boy, did we hit the home run on the survey this week. I don't know if it was a home run, it was a very active survey, probably for sure our most active survey of the year. Probably the second most active survey we've ever had, which was really good to hear input from the community. Although, some of the comments, which we received, well over 500 comments about this question. Some of them got a little bit off task, what the question originally was intended to say, but it did spur on some really good conversation and insight into where to say, but it did spur on some really good conversation and insight into where people's thoughts and ideas are. So, the question was, do you feel that crime would increase or decrease if some of the motels on Highway 80 were closed? Well, 92% said decrease, 8% said increase, which is what you would assume would be said. The dialogue from this has really stemmed a lot of creative and critical thinking on my part to look into seeing what we are doing and how we're doing it. And, you know, Mr. Bonds has been very helpful with me in this process. This is not just a random question. We have been working on this for a while to see where we are. This kind of goes along with our Homeless Task Force initiative that we have taken in, and I think we're going to see some very positive things come from this discussion. And some of the biggest concerns were, first of all, thinking that we are dictators of business and we're not as government. That's not what we do. We don't tell people what to do. We enforce rules, regulations, and ordinances for not just business on Highway 80, but every business in town. Your businesses, my businesses, and no matter where you are in Longview, that's our job, is to enforce ordinances and rules and laws. And wherever there's criminal activity going on, it's our job to curtail that criminal activity at whatever the cost. That's what we are to do as providers of public safety for our community. That's the primary role of the city government, is public safety. So, we will continue to look into this, to see how we can make an impact on our community and see where this leads us. But I appreciate Mr. Bonds and his help with looking into opportunities for us as a city to grow, to grow in all respects, leaving no one out, and not doing this anything to hurt people. This is a helpful thing when we do things, when we're upholding laws and ordinances and rules and regulations. Those are things that are protection for our community, and that's what our job is as public servants, so. But thank you for all the insight and all the comments. And, you know, when we have that much dialogue on one simple, one-line question, it means people are interested, and so when people are interested, it's our job to take note of that, and so we certainly will. So, I appreciate that. For fun, okay, this is probably the funniest question, not the funniest question we're asked, but the funniest response I have ever received, and it's the other category I'm talking about. If you're going to a beach, what would you take if you only take three items? Okay, sunscreen, sunglasses, swimsuit, that was 44%. Flip-flop, swimsuit, toothbrushes, 31%. Sun hat, sunscreen, radio, 10%. Other, 15%. And I would love to read you those others, because it goes everywhere from crab boils to crawfish stuff, to fishing stuff, to beer, to girlfriend, not my wife. It went all over the place. It was very entertaining. So, I appreciate the humor. You know, it's nice when we can laugh a little bit, and we can enjoy things in the midst of things that are going on in the community, and it's fun to have a question where people can kind of play a little bit. So, I appreciate everybody that took the survey. I know I enjoyed it. I read every single one of those other comments, because it does make me, it does make me laugh a lot. I would like to say two quick things, then we'll close up. First off, I want to make note and thank the Board of Directors at Leadco for their vote to fund the East Texas Advanced Manufacturing Academy here in the community for over $1 million. That will go a long way to help this academy get started. This academy will change the lives of our kids that live in our community and all around our community, all in the East Texas area. And I appreciate their foresight and their thought process. It was a long process, it was a meeting that was filled with discussion, but in the end, I think the right decision is made, and I think this should move forward, and hopefully at breakneck speed. We hope to start this academy as early as this August, enrolling children from children, kids, they are children to me, he's my age now, from the high schools, and start it in this fall. And so, I see that as a really positive program that we will grow upon, and we will see generational changes in our community. So, I look forward to that. That's an economic development tool, it's a quality of life tool, it's a life tool for some of these kids. It is life for some of them. So, I appreciate it, and I appreciate Leadco's Board of Directors for acting as they did. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Shahara. I failed to mention her tonight, because part of that scholarship that was given tonight was because she donates her stipend that we receive up here as well to add to that scholarship. So, she took that to a $2,000 per-person scholarship this year instead of $1,250, and I know that's very nice for you to do that, and it's appreciated for these kids, and I hope they'll use those scholarships to further education. The last thing I'll say is it's an honor to be here with you council members. It's an honor to be the mayor of this city. I don't take it lightly. I take it as a pleasure, a privilege, and I appreciate you having trust in me to give me three more years, and I look forward to serving you with integrity, with honesty, with transparency, and I look forward to our city continuing to grow as it has over the last three years. So, thank you very much, and thank you, council members. This meeting is adjourned.